Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Nelson's special call meeting and public hearing, May 19th, 2022, for the City of Nelson. We're going to call a meeting to order. And if you don't mind, let's have a word of prayer to get us started. By God, we thank you, Lord. We just ask that you would meet with us tonight, Lord, that you would just speak to us, Lord, that we would make the best decisions for this city. Lord, I thank you for unity, Lord, and peace tonight. And I just ask that you would be with our EMTs, our servicemen, our police officers, Father God, and those that are on the streets for us, Lord. We just ask that you would bless this meeting and be with us in Jesus' name, amen. Okay. Judge of allegiance, Mr. James.
I play with allegiance as a flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice
First up is our agenda approval. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
I'll make the motion.
James, can I get a second?
I'll second.
William Taylor, and all in favor? unanimous. Okay. Next up is going to be public hearing for public appearance. If anybody has anything to say, we ask that you would limit it to what we have here on the agenda for this evening. Yes, sir.
Do you want items on the capital improvement plan and the budget under this title? Or should that be waited until we go?
This is what it's for.
You can talk now if you want to, and you can even talk again at the public hearing. Oh!
Yeah, you have two minutes. Tell them, no, kidding. No, if you have something, please bring it.
Thank you, Councilor. Mike Hadwin, 724 Pickens Street. They wanted to talk about two things, specifically on the capital improvement program. I have some questions for Miranda, specifically on the second page for the new parks. There's a whole series of projects, like the open space walking trails, et cetera, et cetera. All, most of those, in fact, all of those things were done and members put in before we had undertaken the master plan for the parks. At most, many of these things, like there was parking for the kiddie park, parking down by the, at least, the old restroom and down under that. That stuff probably unlikely may not happen. Also, School Street, there was, and this got some recommendations in here that are on the roads and streets. Those numbers, as I've said a year ago, those numbers are not right, and we're just carrying forward. But most unlikely that those projects have any real connection to what we're going to end up with out of the master plan.
Well, we won't know that until Michael Kidd comes in and delivers his.
Well, we have a hint of it from what he presented back two years ago, what he showed there. And you're right, we don't really know what it is. And you, my point is that the dollar signs and the projects probably not going to line up. They might then allow other projects to move up sooner.
And it's possible. I mean, and when that time comes, we'll definitely do an amendment, right? We'll amend it. But we can't amend something that we don't have a clue of what, how, you know, what we're going to do.
So we're just going to leave in all of the stuff in?
We're going to leave it right now?
It's probably not valid.
Well, we need somewhere to put those dollars, too. And rather than pushing and pulling, we need to see what he's going to come up with. You know, we already have the survey.
But it's, at the end of the day, it's reserved for parks and rec.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's kind of what we did. We ended up consolidating a lot of those smaller projects into a bigger group.
I see that, yeah.
And that verbiage on there just leaves it open to be able to apply it to those little smaller projects as a whole.
Well, you know, it's just, it's kind of a weak capital improvement program, but it is what it is, I guess. I don't know how to do it much different than to just leave all the stuff with the knowledge that you're probably going to have to change it up.
I think it'll look, I think it'll, it'll look a lot different once we get Michael Kidd's recommendations in and the council votes on, hey, this is what we want to see there. This is what people want to see. This is what Michael Kidd wants to see, or this is what the council would like to see. I think once, once we have that, like Miranda said, the parks and rec dollars are the same regardless of where you spend it, right? We'll have a better idea of what we're going to be able to allocate to that project or those phases of that project.
Yeah. Second point that I wanted, which I shared previously, was we have a real challenge with our capital improvement program where we're just simply rolling forward what we didn't do last year and the year before and the year before and the year before. And so there are projects specifically like sidewalks that have been approved or in the 2013 version of a capital improvement program.
I'm going to say I disagree, and I'm going to tell you why I disagree. Because of the money that we've spent already in the last three years, the money that we have that's allocated for this year, and the $900,000 that we have allocated over the next three years. So were we laid out of the gate getting, getting things rolling? I agree. But I don't think in the last two years that the council that's here now has had a problem with the projects. I think that if they've had the right information and, and that includes maintenance, I mean, purchasing equipment, sanitation, trucks, bobcats, things for the city that the city needs, right? So we, they moved forward with a lot of that stuff. And I think kudos to them because before that, there was not a lot of movement at all. It's, everything's not going to happen over.
No, I agree. But let's just take sidewalk project and let's see how rapidly it's moved. It's nine years.
We talk about that every time you get up there, though. I know it's there.
Well, and then, we just, it was in that, 2017, you were going to do it, then moved it up to 2022, didn't do it. Now it's 2027.
And I think when we talked about it last meeting that we had when you were here, I told you that my main concern was storm drainage, storm drainage for these people. I've got storm drain, we've got water in one of people's houses, under their houses. That's going to take priority, I believe. And I'm going to say I see it for the council when I say that. That takes priority over sidewalk. Do we want sidewalks? Absolutely. Are we going to put sidewalks in? Absolutely.
Well, we put the drainage stuff in two years ago, and we never have done anything with it.
Well, we have had some bush hogging done, and we, and we do have them coming out to clear our drains.
We've made the budget. I mean, we met with the engineer, and remember you and I walked up and down there, had proposal, I put it in the budget, we haven't implemented it. I think there's a strong case to say that we're not implementing. The only thing that we've gotten done is.
I think you talked about drainage clearing.
They've already started that process. It's bush hogging and drainage clearing go hand in hand. Bush hogging is done first, and they come back and do the drainage clearing. They just did bush hogging, like within the past month.
He's supposed to re-tunnel that drainage system. Where it's flooding out, well.
What was approved was to have it cleaned out.
What was approved is to have all those, all those pipes cleaned out. That's what was approved.
By the county, and we're on their list of things to do.
They have a, they have a list of every one of them that we have, and then, of course, we've got the drainage project that Barry just, I just looked at with Barry, which is hillside to Cherokee.
Well, I have a suggestion to offer the council, and that is that we should create a, on all the capital project, there's a list of priorities and issues that you can identify. There's not one that tries to address all of the projects that haven't been done. And I'm thinking we should add one in, and it should basically be all of those, we need to try to catch up to where we're far behind on because we haven't been implementing as much as we should have. We had some, but we're way, way behind, and we're just simply moving forward, moving forward. I'm trying to eliminate that, how we're going to do that. Create another criteria that says we're going to advance all the projects that were notified the furthest back, give them the highest priority, and then.
I disagree. I would do that.
Well, I'm just offering it to the rest of the council. If you want to see those projects done.
And I appreciate your comments, and we're going to look, we're doing the best that we can.
Well, the second thing I would do is I would try to get someone who's responsible and accountable to see that these projects are being implemented. And in my mind, that would probably be Miranda because she knows the most about all the projects and what's out there. And at every council meeting, like right now, we do a budget, or she prepares a budget summary of what we spend and da, 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 da. There should also be a capital improvement program expenditures, and there's a whole list that the state requires us to do anyway, that basically they want to know if you haven't spent the money, or if there was cost overruns, or what's the status of each project. That should be a report so that every month, the council is now paying attention to all of our efforts to move forward on implementing these things. Otherwise, next year I'll be back again whining that we're just carrying this stuff over again, and here's my evidence.
Well, hopefully this year, with the IGA that we have in place with the county, and they're, they agree to honor, continue to honor, I think that we'll be able to move a lot of projects forward. Paving, sidewalks, things of that nature. And, and it's not that, when they come out and we have another section of sidewalk going in, and maybe it's still working, we can look and see about doing some additional sidewalks while they're out here, you know? I mean, it's not that we can't, it's just getting through one, and, because they don't have a lot of people to throw at that either. And anything over $100,000 has to have a project manager. And if we're going to get it for free and not have to pay somebody $70,000 a year or so much per hour, that's the best, that's the best way to spend the money here. We don't have a lot of money.
We're not getting it free. I mean, when we bring in to do the paving and stuff, there's a cost to us. Now, they give us the materials.
I'm talking about your project manager that's on every project over a certain dollar amount.
Yeah.
So just like this amount here.
There's no real savings for us.
Not true.
I see a challenge by the city trying to connect itself strictly with.
How much was, how much was the road over here that they paid? They paid that whole road on the, half a channel wide? Was it $11,000?
It was $12,000.
There's a, there's a significant cost there.
No, I know that. But of the other projects, it's not like, you know, we've got 100% drainage clogged up, which has been another two years and nothing has happened.
Mike, we had COVID. I mean, there's people out.
I cleaned up mine out here at the.
And I'll give you a shovel.
You know what? I would do it. You know, it's disgusting to me to see this, you had 100% problem and we're not, we're not doing anything.
That's not true. We are doing something. We have an IGA.
I shouldn't be disgusted then because we're doing a lot, I guess.
There you go. I mean, I'm just telling you.
Last little thing, just a minor thing. Again, you mentioned at our last meeting that the lawnmower assistant guy, I don't know what his name is, or what his title is, that's left.
Yes.
And I was, I was getting an Aubrey burger this lunch, and this is a little career thing they had, wanting to give, this is the path, career path and benefits. They have team members, which are the people who serve, and chief managers, assistant managers, and general managers. A team manager, a team member, the bottom of the deck, that gets part-time, off, medical, dental, and vision, 401K, and life insurance. That's the person handing me my hamburger.
That's the difference in a corporation.
Well, you told me he left because he did a higher salary, which I heard you saying. So my point is, we're probably not going to attract people we can keep on board if we don't, if we want to get professional people who have experience on how to do some of these things unless we pay them or have some kind of benefit package to go along with. I was surprised, that's, I don't know what an Aubrey person makes, but I'm sure it's not a lot. But they also get medical, dental, days, 401, and life insurance, which is a pretty good package.
The council will approve a stipend for their employees that helps with their medical because we don't, we don't have that. So, you know.
Maybe we shouldn't be in the business, or we're going to have to accept what we're going to get, which is.
Well, I disagree because we've already hired somebody, so I appreciate your comments, though. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Dixon, the third.
Robert Dixon. And your address?
3016 Cypress Court.
Yes, sir.
I would have to second the thought that there needs to be a long-term strategy and procedures of implementing some sort of prioritization protocol that factors in all of the various different issues of currency currently at every level. So, you know, sewage systems would be a priority to be dealt with first, and potholes and roads, things like this would be priority. Because as these currencies are devalued, if these projects are planned later, then the money will not be able to pay for it. And so then you might have a new slide or a sunset, that you will not have a functioning sewage system or road system. So, that's one thing, so one thing to look into as a way to prevent that problem from getting out of hand is to become more locally reliant on these scenarios. So the Web 3 platform is something for anyone, I'm aware that there might be some individuals going off to some sort of technical training schools. The Web 3 platform is a effort to provide some sort of sovereignty in scenarios like this with a supremacy on other jurisdictions is causing a problem. So some way to maintain the value of the funds we have is needed because if we just hold this money in savings accounts, it is just evaporating because it's constantly losing value. And so the Web 3 platform is one way we can organize as a local community with a network to communicate with each other, and it also provides other resources. So some sort of localized currency is another thing we need to consider. And perhaps, I don't, I know the Constitution says only gold and silver coin can be used as a legal tender, so I, perhaps we should save this city's money in gold and silver, and we need an army to protect that. So there's other things that are options. So there's, there's cryptocurrencies. It can be a volatile market, just like anything else, but it appears that Bitcoin is turning into the cryptocurrency reserve currency.
All right, we're, just so we're on the same page, our, so we do have our money in the bank because that's a requirement. It's not in the savings account. We don't lose money on the money that we have there.
Right, so if you have $100.
We don't make interest either, so, because as a city, you can't. But we do have our money there in the bank, and it's, so that, we have state laws that require us to do certain things as far as financial, be in financial compliance, and we are. As far as our roads and streets, we do have a program, and we have those roads listed. Any potholes or anything like that, it's taken care of immediately. Any type of an emergency is taken care of immediately. Last month, I believe, it was the month before that, we had a couple of our, what are those things called? The curfews that kicked in.
All of the men are all working to keep the supply chain up in other communities because we're zoned out of work, and all their money is being sucked into mortgages and car payments.
Gotcha. Everybody, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot.
And the government at the federal level is providing more services than it is constitutionally permitted to be involved in.
But that's not, that's not the city. The city isn't doing that, so.
But you're relying on the currency they use, which they are devaluing and they are restricting.
Is there anything else regarding this, this agenda tonight that you want to discuss?
Prioritization.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Create a local currency and trade with your neighbors. Make a local farm to enhance the flavors.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Public hearing for the 2022 budget. Can I get a motion to open the hearing? Who's did? Do we need a motion to open it, the public hearing?
Or you can just open it. You can decide to open.
It's open. So anybody have anything regards to the budget for 2022, the Nelson City budget for 2022?
So I have something easy, okay? Okay, I want 724 Pickens Street. Miranda, did we do a transfer of funds into our cash reserve? Have we already done that? And so the latest number in the budget reflects that. I couldn't find it in the budget, I didn't know where to look.
Yes, it reflects it on the statement of expenditures. Yes, we did it based off of this, the last audit, the fund balance that was audited numbers.
Yeah, perfect. That was really easy. Last time it took me three times for you to do it. You're ahead of me now. That'll make an attorney happy.
Also, in the budget, did you say that we have the 4% contingency line?
I'm sorry?
The 4% contingency line? And it's a correction.
Good. I was ready to cite the council approval and all of that that I did the time before. You're much more responsive. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have anything for our budget hearing? Okay, that's enough. Okay, budgets closing now?
Yep.
Okay. Close the budget, we'll close the public hearing for the budget, Nelson budget 2022. All right, approval of minutes. Can I get a, 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 for the May 2nd, 2022 minutes?
I'll make the motion.
James, maybe a second?
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next up is department reports. I would like to move the June council meeting out one week, if that's possible. It's currently at, let's see, it's, it was currently on the.
Sixth Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, on the 6th, and I'd like to, I propose that we have it on the 13th.
If that will be.
You guys go ahead. Do I need to go on one of them?
Sure.
When's, uh?
It'll be in Monday. It's just one week away.
I'm going out of town, but I can't remember if it's the week of the 13th or the week of the 20th. I guess, following a big game, we're leaving on Sunday.
I don't think we're going to have a lot on, in June, because we're.
It'll be that Wednesday before Father's Day weekend? Before Father's Day weekend?
Before, I'll, I'll be here then.
Okay. All right, so you want to get a motion to move the meeting to June the 13th?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, Nathan, can I get a second?
Second.
James, all in favor? Yeah, thank you. I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to go down and take a look at, at the building that was demo, Rebecca Lodge. We did not have to bring in additional dirt. We, I think they did a great job of sloping that for us.
It looks good.
It does look good. I have had a ton of calls, I know you've had people in here, but just saying that it's nice to have a clean slate to work with. We did, we did have Bubba remove a portion of that slab because the sand would not stand on it, and he charged us to cut it and haul it off. So, James, do you know how much of that he hauled off? It was high.
Eight foot of the slab.
Eight, eight foot by whatever, right?
Yeah.
It was eight foot, and it was.
It was a machine.
It was so thick. It was kind of like the one over here at the, at the police building. So we did have to write a check for $2,500 for, for that piece of it, so I wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page with that.
Looks good.
That's what I thought. I thought it looked really good.
That's progress.
They were.
It's progress, she said.
Oh, yeah.
I did meet with Barry Holbert regarding the, the new drainage project coming up to getting started on, letting him know what we had going on. Also met with him on the Kennesaw Avenue piece and discussed the things he's looking at, which is going to be elevation, and he's, he's going to be working with Lori's team to make sure that he ties off with them and looks at, looks at the elevation for the proper 50-year storm, 100-year storm stuff. He did, he made a note, and I also met with Lori and conveyed that he did not see the socks, the filter socks around the, the annults on Spring Street, and they were in his, they were in his drawing. So she is getting those installed, and also where we have wash over here on the opposite side of the road, they rip-wrapped it, but it's like the clay is just coming down, and it's because Barry says there's not enough vegetation there to hold it in place. So he said hydro seating was, was in his plans as well as filter socks for that, and I conveyed that to Lori, and she is looking at making that happen here shortly. We will have a walkthrough with her. Is there anybody interested in doing the walkthrough with me in this morning or afternoon preferred for you?
Afternoon's generally better for me.
Morning's been better for me. I have to be honest.
Sounds like you're on your own.
What time in the afternoon and what day is better? I know, I just know that you are.
Thursdays are hard for me. Usually just after 5:30.
Okay. So Nathan, you're after 5:30, and you're Monday, Tuesday, or Friday, right?
Basically, yeah.
Just whatever day.
Okay.
Or some week, I don't know.
James?
I'll just have to work, we can see what my work schedule is.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'd like for you guys to take a look. I also have asked her to come out and, and do a handoff at a council meeting so she can, if you guys have any questions or anything like that, she'll bring Josh with her and can answer those. But we are nearing the end now. We've got some tops old to put in, and then they have to see them and put their socks in. So, we did, I did give Justin Brown a call regarding some, a quote for sprinklers because, yeah, we're going to, I didn't realize it had been taken out and had not been put back in, so. We do have a water, a water meter that's in place, though, at Rebecca Lodge, so it won't be, it's not like we're having to install any of those. Yeah, just have to deactivate it. I also did a walkthrough with Lori and conveyed the stuff that Barry had, had shared with me, and then Barry had already texted her, so they're, they're in communication with that. We did hire a maintenance guy. He is, he's local. His name is Ben Dupree, and he met with Ricky. Ricky seemed to really like him. That's Kelsey, James met him. We did a good interview, and he is, he's excited to be a part of the city and maintenance program. I wanted to also bring up tonight for you guys that are here, trash cans are here, our new sanitation. I wanted to also bring up tonight for you guys that are here, trash cans are here, our new sanitation cans are here. Anybody that wants one, come down and fill out a form with Kelsey, and you can pick it up or can have it dropped off to you. So, they're, they're in. They are nice. I think that's about it. Anybody got any questions regarding those things for me? Nathan, have anything?
The $2,500, we probably should have approved that because it was over $1,000.
We do need to approve it.
I would have liked to phone call or text or something, because we just approved $10,000 for him to take the walls out.
We did approve the $10,000 for him to take the walls out, and we, we knew that, I think when we were at the meeting, we knew we were probably gonna have to have that, that cut back. So we just didn't know how bad it was gonna be. But he did cut us a deal and not having to re-mobilize his equipment, and, and it was under $5,000. So with it being an amendment, James is here, I was here, we went down and looked at it. And we did go ahead and, and make that decision while he was here, so he didn't have to re-mobilize. It would have cost us more money if we had him. He basically charged us for the dump fees. That's what he charged us for in his gap waiver. And he ended up having to bring another piece of equipment in as well to do it, so. Do we need to vote on that and get that approved since it was spent money? It was the $2,500 for Barry. Go ahead and approve it or do it. Not Barry, I'm sorry. It was Bubba. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the $2,500 from SLOSS for the removal of the concrete slab for Bubba Holcomb?
I'll make a move.
James? Can I get a second?
Second.
Nathan, call in favor? Yeah, Nathan, I looked at it, and with regards to, to dollars and where it was at, looking back on it, probably should have texted you and let you know. But we went ahead and, but we can see it was there. And if he had left, it would have, and had he come back, it would have just been. I think that's all I have for right now. We'll go on down to unfinished business if nobody has any questions. And first thing up is the grant fund distribution to local churches and the school. I have not gotten, had a chance to reach out to every one of the churches yet. Did you send me the number for the, for the Baptist one? That was the one, the sticking one. I have not called them yet.
I'm not talking to them. They'd be amazing if they knew.
And they do have a project?
Yeah, they have two major funding, they can even get insurance and foundation things.
All right. So the church here has two projects that they could use the funds towards the school, just use computers for their, for their kids. And then I've got a call here. Bethesda said that their project would be their cemetery that needs some desperate need.
And new doors.
And new doors. So they, I think everybody, and the pilgrim, the pilgrim churches, is that the name of it?
Pilgrim churches, Anthony, Vivian, and...
So they have a... They have a...
They do have foundation fixer.
Yeah, it's a structural issue that they have, so. Definitely use it. I think what, in talking with these folks here, and I know you talked with Anthony and Vivian, I think just it's, everything is down as far as attendance even and things like that. They were saying the tides is down. So this money would go all the way and help with their, with their...
The one across the street with the steeple and...
Yeah, their steeple is coming off. Their retaining wall is falling in. I saw a guy over there working on this thing, so.
They renamed it. It's the Anchor Church.
The Anchor Church. I'm gonna make it up to that.
It's on here.
Okay. So yeah, you wanna, did you...
They're in change, all being changed and they have to look for city all too.
Yeah. So it's the Nelson Baptist Church, the Anchor Church, which is the new name, the Pilgrim Baptist Church, Bethesda Baptist Church, and then the Auburn Academy. And then you put the rules of engagement here.
A lot of it's similar. I think they really relaxed the rule when final rule came out. This was one page of like four that had stuff on it, because there's ways to identify them. It was, basically it's a nonprofit. 501, 23, 501, 19. They give you like impacted nonprofits, examples of decreased revenue from donations, fees, financial insecurity, increased costs, capacity to weather financial hardships, challenges covering payable with mortgage or other operating costs. Had a lot of different ways that you can identify them, and it had another line there that basically you need your own ways of identifying too, just.
It did. And I looked, and I, I know you, because you've sent me some stuff too, and I, I looked over it. I personally, with this being a small town, I, I, I can see doing for our churches, you know, loving on them a little bit, even our school. I think that we get, we're gonna get into more challenges if we try to do individual.
Well, I think that churches might even be able to do individual from the ones that they receive. I don't know. It necessarily has to be a project. We still have to report on what it was. If it will not even necessarily a project, we still have to report. We have the funds and just the basic idea of what it was used for, and it has to be allocated by 2024 to the 2026.
I think, I think I like the project better because it's clean.
But I've been saying instead of, they may not have projects and they have needs within the church that, as long as it's legal. I mean, the, the cost that is gonna, they're gonna incur to do steeple in the wall and pilgrim with their foundation, it's gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, because that was what it was. When I talked to them, I don't think any of the people that asked about who's gonna have a problem with the project. So it comes down to, do we do $2,500 or do we do $5,000?
Why don't you do $10,000?
Those, I think we discussed the $2,500.
The school falls under a nonprofit?
And we'll have to check the nonprofit side, so I think they do, can do the weight side of it.
They do. I just checked. The county is doing, the county, and that's where we talked about it, the county's actually doing for, Higgins County's doing for the schools there, because they can, they're within the county. And they're doing public schools, so.
Do you know of anybody around us that's given money to a private school like that?
We just have to, it has to fall within this stuff. That's why I printed down to have the paperwork from final rule, like the actual, it's only 50 pages on it.
First Baptist, the First Baptist of Jasper, they have a, they have a, they have a little school there, but it only goes through, I think, kindergarten. But they're, they were eligible for funds from there too, and that's a private organization, so. And et cetera from the church.
And the regular church.
With the county in here too.
Yeah. And then Cherokee County, when we were there, they were talking about the same thing. I don't remember which one it was. It was Harry Johnson, it was, it was Harry that was talking about, they, they had partnered with the schools on some different things to...
Yeah, they were, as long as they have their private...
I think the last one they did, they paid for, they paid for school lunches, so all the lunches were free for this year, I think, for the kids. There were several programs that they implemented with those funds, so. And I think our total funds was $511,000 and change.
Twenty-seven.
Was it $527?
Because each tranche, I think, was one.
I saw a note. Your note said $511 something. $511.
No, it's too late. Maybe I have my head up just a second.
That's what we...
It's right over, it's right over $500,000 is what we're getting. We've gotten the first dump of it. We'll get the next one. They've been kind of talking about it, I would say, probably in the next few months. I think I read some, I don't know, don't quote them.
And the, and keep in mind, these funny, these, these funds that we got were to be used within the city. That's the value of that. So we wanna, we're gonna do for stuff that needs to be within our city limits.
I thought we, I thought we already used most of it on this project down here.
There's still $80,000 sitting there.
Only to open it up. We used, because we had drawings already on that project, so we just flipped it and used...
I wrote two checks.
Yeah.
How much did we initially use?
Maybe you go get the books. I'm not guessing.
Yeah, go get that. That'd be good. We have it here. Initially, you mean initially we used here?
Yeah, to open it up or whatever.
Was it $75,000? It'll be better if you give us the book and then we'll have it, so. We just, the project that qualified it, you know, when we qualified it, had to be, the project had to have drawings and, you know, it had to be already set up and in place in order to be able to use it. So that project was a good one, so we used the money out of this rather than the SLOSS, which opened up SLOSS dollars for us.
$514,220.
$514, there you go.
These are pages we're going to need to, to call this in.
Yeah, I have them.
We wrote a check for $67,672 to all shift. We wrote a check for $101,867 to them also. And we did the employee bonuses plus the A D C, or the tax things, whatever, that were in there with that. So I think it was right over $6,000 total.
So on this, this money that we got, I thought it was gonna be like around $600,000 from, from the Fed.
Yeah, we had 70 from the first grant. 72 from the one, the initial one that released. I think we spent 59. This one is the $511.
We had two weeks to do that. That was, that was a long hour. Kelsey had a computer trying to order, order, order. And a book just stayed with all the information. That's crazy.
Yeah, the first payment was $257,111. So the next one was the exact same thing.
And we've spent, so we've spent $100...
Right over $80,000 showing there.
$83,000.
Yeah, out of the first quarter, right?
Yeah, and you're gonna get another.
And then you're gonna get another $257,000.
$257,111.
So how are we paying, when this project's done, how, what are we, what are we using to pay it? Because I was under the impression we was gonna use like 500 to pay it, and then using SLOSS to cover the rest.
So we've used, we've spent a total out of the first $257,000, $111.
Yeah.
We've spent a total of $168,000 on that project.
Yeah.
So.
When I think initially when they first did it, their rules were very tight, very tight as far as what can and can't use it for. And then they would relax it a little bit, and then the final rule came out, which opened it up even more, so.
Pretty much everything was narrowed down to loss of revenue up to $10 million.
Do you know what the remaining ounces to pay for this Kennesaw that they have paid?
It's gotta be five, so.
I don't think it's, no, because we use SLOSS money too.
Yeah.
I was paying up SLOSS before we got this.
Yeah.
And increments.
So I've got this checked in, but I think we've paid over $400,000.
I think we owe like $207,000, but it's already been encumbered for within our SLOSS dollars. So I've already set that, those, that funds aside in all calculations of everything going forward as far as purchases.
If, if these dollars are gonna be done though, if even...
You will get it. You will get that. That's not an if.
I mean, it's not if, but if, I don't think we can do an amendment anyway. So it, what happens is, is this has to be opened up by the time you have it.
I haven't, no, not how it's reported, because when you go in to report it, you're only reporting on what you've used. They don't know what we've set it aside for. It doesn't have a way until you report that. So I've put in, I've put in two projects.
All of it's open then? This, this last $257,000?
We haven't gotten the next.
But it's open.
We've only got $80,000.
Sitting in there. And you can start to decide what you're gonna do with whatever. Whenever you go in to report, it'll ask if you do projects. We put in a project down here, listed everything out. We put in for the bonuses, the employee bonuses, and all that stuff. And then you get to the end, and it wants to know if you're gonna use it for revenue replacement. Well, we didn't, because we actually had an increase. They don't let you report it without saying that that's what you're using it for. So they still have our projects, but if the whole thing is just kind of jacked up. But it's, you don't have to tell them.
So can you, this is what, I think this is what it comes down to. Can you use the second draw prior to receiving it?
And would you use it if you don't have it?
That's what I'm saying. So if we owe $200,000 on the Kennesaw Avenue project...
You can. I'm pretty sure that that's still sitting there open. If you are already within that project and are in the start of that project, I'm 90% sure that you probably can't use those funds.
Yeah, even though you've been on the check for it, yeah.
I mean, if you received it, you could just transfer it into the SLOSS account.
Pay it back to the SLOSS account from that money. But if you, so when they did the final rule, it opened it up for other things that have a lot to do with it, which was very much in question.
So in the beginning, the final rule was not out, and so once the final rule come out, a lot of that changed. But at the end of the day, as long as we have enough set aside to cover it, if we can, we can do it either way. We can pay it out of the SLOSS and then pay it back out of that, or whichever way you want to do that. But the money is set aside in SLOSS. I have accounted for that just in case.
I was just, I was just thinking, I mean, we got, we got the clean slate there for the part, what we want to do. And I don't know, that money can't be used.
Rosen Streets, Rosen Streets can't, you're right. But this, this $257,000 can be used any way you want it to.
No.
No? Not now?
No, there's still restrictions on it as to what you are and are not allowed to do with it as far as infrastructure goes. You can do like your infrastructure project, your, like your drainage stuff or stormwater, broadband is a big one. And they can't, there were categories, you can't like go put a park in if I remember correctly. There's, there's categories you can put it to, and there's categories that you cannot put it towards.
You can do nonprofits, and you can do stormwater. Like that's, that, there's just key little things that you can do. Revenue replacement is another one.
It has to be something based on the way COVID would have influenced your community.
Yeah, but there's, and I guess what, what Nathan's saying is there's no way to use any of those funds on the part that we're trying to get.
No.
What I'm getting at is like, we got these two piles of money. I said piles, I want that.
Nathan, pretty big.
I would like to have the little leftover that's more diverse, so you can use for more things, you know, so.
Exactly.
If we can use it up on this project.
Which could be SLOSSed.
Yeah.
So if we could...
But I'm pretty sure, like I was saying, I, I think it's $260-something thousand that we owe on that project down there.
Yeah, we paid a chunk of it.
Yeah, so with that being set aside, if we do get these funds before that comes due, then we can use, or would, yeah, if we get those funds, we use those funds. I would personally rather use that fund because reporting it for her and for the records would be so much easier. But you're still looking at the fact that you have $83,000 still sitting in the bank.
I'm gonna say with what we're, with the next draw that's coming and, and the 80 that's sitting there, that's $340,000. And if we owe $260,000 on that project, you still have...
We still have SLOSS funds to cover too. We didn't have one that... It catches, like, you can't use SLOSS funds to give money to a church.
Yeah.
You can't. We can't use government funds to give it to a church. We can't use government money to go help somebody that we know needs help. That if you donate money to a church, a church has a little more leeway as to what, they can even use it to help people in their, in their congregation if they need something.
Yeah, but even at $5,000, you're looking at $25,000. That's not a lot. Not in lieu of what, what we've been giving.
It kind of gets you a little diversity of what you actually use those funds for.
Yeah, I'm not against giving the churches and the school. I just want to make sure.
I understand what you're talking about.
We don't get in trouble for no, you know, not following some kind of rule we didn't know about.
That's why I've been reading and reading, because I'm the one who's risked gonna get slapped on that. But it's, basically we can identify a, a group, which would be the churches and the, the school. And as long as the donation we give is not over $50,000, the reporting on it is lax. If it gets to like $50,001, that's, it's a whole other mess.
I would just make sure that you created a great paper trail and checked all your, yeah. And that way, at the end of the day, it's, it's very, it's very vague, but nonprofit is a nonprofit.
To cover our boats, so we were gonna, we're gonna ask for a project. That's what we're at.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt to have, you know, some kind of paperwork going.
Yeah, and we have to know how it's spent, just so that, because we're still responsible for the funds, even if it gets into someone else.
I would probably even have that after they've used up those funds, just have them, have it be a requirement, that they report back how they utilize those funds.
At some point, it may come back. I don't know that, you know.
It probably will, it probably will never come back, but just for...
Like an itemized list type thing or something?
Yeah.
So they were, they were basically identify a project and then, and then just report on their, on their overall cost, huh?
Yes.
And you could even do it like as a donation now, and then when the next chunk of money comes in, you can do another $5,000. I mean, it just, it's basically just extra money the city got. We didn't need this money. It was just, I shouldn't say we didn't need it, because we can find a way to use it. But it was just a chunk of cash. But it was just a chunk of cash that came in, that wasn't expected, and we already had our projects budgeted for with splosts.
You got a question?
I didn't.
Yes?
Can I ask you a question? I submitted a proposal to you a long, long time ago, which was basically aiming at trying to spend some of that grant on the stormwater system. And basically investing in what we already sent our splosts program to have Barry do the entire city and to come up with a, a plan in terms of what needed to be done. And then use those funds to implement it that way, just as you indicated, take away from splosts money and have, some of that money, not all of it, could be used towards implementing a, a plan that Barry's, hasn't been asked to do yet.
He has not, and he, he did, I did have a conversation with him, and that's gonna be a later meeting this summer. We're gonna have another brainstorming session, and that's gonna be something we talk about, is, is overall the master plan, the storm drain master plan for the city. And the reason for that, I'll go ahead and allow you to...
It's a rental, well, under...
It is.
Yeah.
And not only that, there's grants for it, but there's, there's, we're finding pipes all over the place. Down here, at the park, um...
I think it's one out in front of your house.
Yeah, and now there's another one over there where it's just a...
Own storm drain, yeah. Apparently I covered it from one of us.
Yeah, the one that bounced up from you.
You have some major storm issue problems, we need to, it's an infrastructure issue, I mean, we, we should donate out. There is a real challenge here in the city.
Oh yeah, there is a challenge, and I mean, we're...
We need to put together a plan to implement it.
And Barry's suggestion, which was, was fix the, fix the, where it's gonna come and hit at, you know, you fix your, you fix the sand first, and then you can start to fix, you know, from the top coming down. But if you flooded the bottom, he said, you're just, with the way things were, you, you could cause road integrity issues. Because at the time, we know that there's a box there with a, you know, the round pipe that goes through it. We weren't sure if there was holes, or how that was, how that was flowing, or anything like that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I agree, we do, we've, we're gonna get our park, master park plan going. We will, at some point, decide this summer on a master storm drain plan. So, and I did talk with Barry, we've got an issue right across the street here that's gonna have to be addressed shortly, so...
I'm sure he's ready, if we give it to him.
He did, he is, and he's, he said he was really glad to see, you know, there's things moving, so again, kudos to these guys for, for making that happen. So Nathan, are you, are you in favor of, of the marking some of our grant money to the churches and the schools, the four churches in the school?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with it.
Twenty-five hundred or five thousand?
I'll go with what everybody is supposed to do.
Okay, I'll start then with Mr. William Taylor, are you in favor?
Hmm, yep.
Okay, James, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Um, I personally will say that I don't think that twenty-five hundred dollars is gonna go very far putting a steeple on a church. I'd like, I, I propose we do five thousand and then see how far that takes the churches, and if our next, we have, we will have leftover funds. And if we need to do, or our next draw, if we need to come back and do another five thousand, I'm good with that as well, if you guys are, we can talk about it at that time. Five thousand, okay?
With a possibility for a second?
With a possibility for a second?
Right.
Okay, so James is in favor, can I get a motion to approve going ahead and distributing the five thousand once I have the project identified for each one of the churches in the school, for five thousand?
I make a motion.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? Unanimous, perfect. Okay, next up is sanitation property lease. This is a ground lease from Evan Howe. Evan, I asked Evan to put something together for us, based on some, some conversations that he and I have had.
What's that for?
I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that, that we did what was right. Evan's always, he's, he's always helping the city, and I wanted to make sure that we did what was right. That we, that we did what was right. I can't go back and fix anything that was, that was done prior to me, but we have tried to, to act with integrity since, so... With that said, the city, I believe Jeff identified that he was gonna give us a two-year, a two-year contract, ground lease, or two-year ground lease. The city can only enter into a one-year ground lease, but then we have four additional terms as an option at one year at a time. With that said, the cost is a thousand dollars a month. He's fixed the driveway to go in, he's left the buffer. It's a two-acre spot, and there's, only the middle is cleared out. We have the right to clear out as much as we need to, or as we want to, and put what we need there in order to house our sanitation truck, our work truck if we wanted to. I know in the past, we talked about doing a, maybe a metal building, a metal over, you know, roof over or whatever to, to put our stuff under. There is, the other thing that is in here is a, is an escalator of, if, if we move past this year, and we move into the next year, we have an escalator, yeah, it's on page eleven. We have an escalator which would take it to, uh, thirty-five dollars pretty much, is how, is how it's gonna roll, it's, it'll go up. I don't anticipate having it much more than two years. Hopefully, we'll be able to find a piece of property. I know we're looking at some now, and if it pans out, it's gonna be awesome, so, and it'll be on the outskirts of town. Jeff looked the lease over, Jeff, did you see anything, and here's a, here's a site sketch where it's, he's, he was like sketching it, of course, as well. Did you see any issues at all with the lease? I didn't know it.
All right, no, I didn't, I didn't, we fixed the one year, and that's, that's good, otherwise.
It was a basic ground lease agreement, so...
This has to come out in general plans, so it looks similar.
Yes, Marina's already could have been into her budget that's in there, though.
It does, and I mean, the, the thing is, is that I, I hope, I hope that we will be able to find a piece of property and, and put up some insurance on it. That would be ideal, that's not right in the middle of the city. But in the interim, this is back behind his place and is out of the way, and hopefully won't be an eyesore. I think if we clean it, keep it cleaned up, it won't be bad either. And I think there, we have an opportunity to put some, you know, you put some control on it if we needed to, where you can't do that in residential area because of dog, people's dogs and things like that, or kids or what have you.
Yeah, I've tried coming in to...
Yeah. We, um...
We'll have to put a fence around it.
We'll put up a fence around it, because you won't wanna leave it. And we can look into those, and Nathan probably knows more about that, and maybe William, but one of those fences with the green screen in it, or the black screen that kinda is tall, something like that. So...
We need to shed big enough to store the cans under.
Yeah, what's left, I'm hoping that we're gonna try to deliver, yeah, we're hoping to deliver the ones that have, our goal is to deliver the ones that we have sanitation accounts for. So I've gotta get with Nate, with Stephen and see when he can, when he can do that. He can, I told him he can use the truck.
It's like a catch twenty-two, because we still have to kind of fill out the forms. So anybody that's able to take them, they may be a lot easier, they just take it as they come along, so you do not have to be able to...
If we can put something on the next sanitation bill, ask them to do...
Well, I'll bring, I'll put it on Facebook, I'll bring it to you.
When we send it out, can we just send one of those forms with them and ask them to draw the back off? Okay, I think that'll be it, that'll go along with it. So, anyway, this is a, this is just a basic ground lease, there's, there's nothing out of the norm here. You'll see on page eleven is the only thing that you just wanna pay attention to. He was very kind to the city with regards to, to the escalator, but it's just a normal thing, so... Does anybody have any questions about the ground lease?
As far as putting a fence around the whole volume, I mean, that would be a pretty...
Oh, I would put it around all two acres, I just put it around the area we plan on using.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the two acres is just to, to create a buffer to keep it from out of the side.
So how big of an area are we talking is cleared, like less than an acre or something?
Oh yes, less, where, and you don't even have to fence all that in. Basically, you decide where you're gonna put your roof over at.
Yeah.
Your metal roof over, and then you fence that area. You fence the gate going into it, and then you would fence that, that small area, and that's how you would do it, just what you're using, so...
These people from running down through the woods and taking their batteries out of trucks.
Yeah, Nathan, set a camera down here.
We put a camera down there.
Anybody have any questions for Jeff? I know Jeff has reviewed this pretty good as well. Okay, well, we ready to move on now then? Can I get a motion to approve the, the ground lease for the sanitation truck and footprint of the city?
I make a motion to approve.
Nathan, you gonna get a second?
Oh, great.
James, all in favor? Unanimous, awesome. All right, next up is Kitty Park, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. William Taylor, and, because I know William's got some stuff for us. So William, if you wanna, wanna kick it off?
Basically, we took the plan, we kinda worked on, I think I laid out everything that I could figure out that needs to be done. We need to make some decisions, how many chairs, how many swings, whatever, so that you can get the bid out on it. One thing on here, like, we staked the property out, so we probably need to handle that.
Yeah, you have a certain... I've got a several copies of it, I'll hold it.
We're just looking down the list, I mean, there's...
Are we gonna have, are we gonna have, are we gonna contact some folks and have them come out and take a look at the area and, and then come back to us with a...
I figured if you have your work, you bid, I mean, I know, I forgot his name already, park designer.
My, uh, my kid.
Michael Kidd.
Michael Kidd, that's it. Michael Kidd, I know Nathan had a phone number, contact him, we can contact him, and put it out for bid to anybody else. But then we need to come and actually look at the area to bid on.
Yeah, and I mean, if we wanna use the redesign, that's, that's part of our master park plan. If we wanna use him to, to, to look at the area and make a suggestion, I'm good with that too.
No, I said, I don't think the guys who are bidding on it, I said it's, there's not a lot of variation to the design.
Well, bid you something here, something here.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to have a course table, you know exactly what you're working with.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I had that on there, but it wouldn't actually be part of the bid, which, that's why I'm saying, I guess we would handle that. And then figure out exactly where that fence, coming up that one property line especially.
Yeah, this is just basically the things that you're saying need to be in the bid, but I think we have to have a plan. And I, I, it depends on how much that park is gonna cost as to if we need drawings, and I have a feeling that it's...
Or that's one of the things, I mean, you're gonna have to set a price for...
Yeah.
What you wanna spend just for the one piece of equipment, and that's fifty to seventy thousand dollars.
It is, so I mean, it's very expensive, so...
What's the threshold for the design?
That's gonna be up to you guys, what, what amount should you wanna spend in that area, do what do we have available?
No, I'm talking about, you said if it was over a certain amount.
At what point do you have to have like a Michael Kidd design it, or...
Fifty thousand, you're gonna have to have a...
The bidders design good enough, see what I'm saying?
Are you gonna ask them to come and...
Take their plan and go, this is what we want?
So they'll draw drawings for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll, if that's part of it, just put it in here.
Give them a layout, and I can draw whatever on it.
And they come in...
I said provide a layout, that would be the plan, that's the second item down the list there.
Go ahead and add site sketch to that, you know, with, with, and I'm, I'm assuming that, from what I hear you say, that you guys, you want to, you want them to bring to the table what they envisioned for that spot of land.
Yeah, like I said, we'll set a max price for the equipment, and like I said, they should have, be able to suggest, okay, you've got, but we don't know exactly the right amount of space. We can roughly figure the safety zones and stuff like that, I'm not skilled in that. But they can come out and do their designs, like ours, layout tape, you've got, I'm figuring roughly out, just what we looked at, thirty-five by thirty-five. They should have probably a master selection, and we consider looking at catalogs, you know, we've tried looking at those, it's kinda hard to tell any of that. But we've got five pieces of equipment that fit here, range, this price is part of the bid, and look at everything.
Tell you what I can do, I can, I can give Jeff Morton a call and ask him, let him know what I'm looking at. He'll put me in, he can put me in contact with his, the head park planner, and I can ask for a short list...
Sure.
That we could reach out to them, and then, you know, anybody could bid on it, but we could...
I said, I know Michael gave us two, I believe, contacts.
He did.
I have, I know Nathan had one to take, his pickings guy he works with a lot.
Did you?
Yeah, like, I, I used them pretty, I have used them several times in the past.
You wanna know, we need to decide for sure, what we want, how many pieces of equipment, how many tables, how many swings, benches, plus the blanks on here.
Yeah, and most of those, what I saw, now, like I said, the, the only one that I had left was the one from Little Types, and that's just twenty percent off there for, for paying for the, for the name.
That's what I'm saying, these professionals at Headlet, they should be able to bring layouts to the table of, you know, at your price range, we can do this, 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 this.
It says, okay.
Is it Southeast Outdoors Solutions, is that who it is?
Yeah, Michael Poles is his name.
Is that his name? What's the number for him?
I thought his office was in Jasper.
It is, seven, seven oh, seven oh four, five zero six six.
Michael Poles.
It says he does it from consulting from the beginning to the end.
So he installation, he literally just tells you what...
I'm sure he could do a drawing fairly, you know, pretty easily.
Yeah.
And for the business, it probably costs me.
Job.
Yeah, yes, sir.
A real minor thing here was, I went through the same exercise many years ago, and what the parks planner from Cherokee County told me was, there's two entrances to the, there's a big one for the car to go through, and a small one for the person to go through, it's a ball gate. Evidently, it was the play area was a slide coming right toward that door entrance, and so we ended up just locking up that door so you can't use it, because it could have been a conflict, so it might be something that they would maybe move it back a little bit to be more room for people, kids going off the slide.
And we might not even have a slide on that end.
Yeah, well, there you go, yeah. The other thing, again, a minor thing is, and I, I guess you're gonna put in new fencing or fix the existing fencing?
Yeah, very fencing.
You're gonna do what?
I would suggest new.
Yeah.
Six foot privacy down that line, share the property line, and then black vinyl coated chain link around the rest of it's my suggestion.
Yeah, a little bit taller than what we have it right now, I think right now it's like, what, four feet?
Four, pretty standard, but we could go higher if necessary.
What's, what's needed is some strapping for the parking lot, again, that's a minor thing, but...
Well, this, we're actually just designing basically fence in, and then leaving the rest of it for Michael to decide with his parking and everything for the other sections. We're just basically handling inside the fence, and then the rest of it would be part of the master from there out.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give this guy, just, I'll give him a call, and then I'll, I'll send a text out to everybody on this. I'll try to do it tomorrow, if not, at least by Monday.
But what do y'all think for, you know, what do y'all wanna put out there as like a max price we're looking at for a piece of equipment there? I said, we just need to fill out these blanks and answer the questions.
You know, the thing about it is, is I think we really need to get a ballpark, I, I don't know what, you could say fifty thousand dollars, and that may really do nothing but, but fix your, you know, expand your land and put your fences up and have one swing.
That's, we're saying, we want a big central piece of equipment, we're willing to spend up to this amount on it, that doesn't include any of the other stuff.
I think if I think...
This is like a per piece thing, is what you said.
Yeah, if I, let me call this guy, is what I would suggest, call him, and get him to just meet me. Right now, I don't have anything to go off of. So if he meets me and he says, yeah, this park, like what you have down here at, at the, the newer park, something like that would cost you seventy-five thousand dollars, or something like that would cost you a hundred and fifteen thousand. He could give us some ideas on what kind of equipment would fit in that space, that, and prices for it. Because right now, I have no clue, I don't, I don't know how much, I know Little Types is overpriced, so, and that's the only book I had. So I don't know what other people's prices are.
Yeah, that's why I was figuring, we set a maximum price, whatever we think would be comfortable, and if there's no pieces of equipment out there that are suitable, we would have to raise it.
Yeah.
Or you could repaint it.
It's not a paint, that's not a painting issue, it's, the rubber's coming off of it, and it rust.
I mean, that's the part that looks ugly.
Yeah.
There's some rust in it.
It's all colored.
Yeah, it's all coated.
Yeah. I said, this is just a list of stuff that needs to go in, and like I said, we need to decide, do you wanna put in? need to decide, do you want to put in three or four tables to start with? Do you want to start with two? Do you get everything done, and later on, if we want to add to it, we can? Just giving them guidelines on what to bid on.
I know we have two at the newer park. I, I think that you're overkill if you do more than two there.
Yeah, I drew three in, but I got to think about it. I think two probably is, you have your 180A up front closest to the gates where you can work that out, and then one down in that lower mid area where you can sit and watch the upper or the lower area, at least to start with.
Yeah.
So like I said, I drew three in, but I think that's probably a little excessive for that one, too. Unless everybody else says they want three, that's the reason why there's a blank there.
Yeah. I mean, I, I look at that area, and I look at the area that's more open down here, and I mean, it's, um, you don't just want to cram a lot of stuff in there, I don't think, but I, I think two table sets would be good, or either one table and a couple of benches, you know? I, I don't think that you're going to flood that place with a ton of people needing to...
Right. I was saying, I drew three in on the tables, I think that's probably a little excessive now that I think about it, so whatever, I think we can fill these in.
I guess, do you have to get that specific on the bid, or can you just give them the concept of the kinds of things that you want, and the maximum price?
Well, that's kind of, you know, we want to see, do we, do we want them to bother putting in any of the springy toys that they ride?
Right.
It's just, the guy wants to be on that, right? We want to park with this end, this end, this end, this end, and we bid it.
Yeah, kinds of things, yeah.
Yeah, furniture based drawing.
Including this stuff.
Yeah, because he's, the, the guy in Jasper that we're talking about, that's what she was saying, he's got the benches, so he could plant all that in there. It looks like he does, he does the site plans as well, so it's a concept of...
That's what I'm saying, any of these professionals should be able to take the little drawing we've got and work out.
Yeah.
You know, like this, not even a complicated site.
It's not, it's just, it's, the thing, the thing that makes it complicated is, for me, because I'm not a playground builder, what can we put on that site? Like, he's got some ideas here. Like, I don't know what that would cost, but if I call him and I say, hey, and here's one of those things. If I call him and I say, hey, yeah, this is a different one, what's something like this going to run? Will this, you know, what can you offer like this that'll fit on that piece of property? Or you have a couple of options?
We can fill that number in before the bid actually goes out, and you can ask them, say, is, is there a good amount of equipment out there, several choices in a range of such and such? And you can set your range, because you may have another dealer that works with someone else, and you get a better piece of equipment for less.
Yeah, and at least, like I said, I think we'll have a starting place if we, if, because he's got some sets on there that's pretty nice, that...
Yeah, if you don't want everybody to roll in with the top of the line set, and that's all they bring you.
Yeah. So, um, I'll, I'll take this and, um, see if I could get a meeting with him, and at least pick his brain. Um, I'll show him this list, see if there's anything else we need to add to it, and then he's got the option to bid as well, you know? And I, I like the fact that he does all of it, he'll do a...
And like I said, he may know more about what's available out there, and the price ranges, and so, okay, well, he said right off the bat, there's eight choices out there for less than $75,000. We don't want somebody then bringing bids in at $100,000, like, say, maximum.
Exactly. Yeah, I like that, that way we've got, we've got a, I think, a starting point.
Right, so just looking at those books, I mean, that figures somewhere around.
You can't really tell much about looking at those.
They're hard, but you know, if they can bring an actual picture of...
Yeah.
A piece of equipment that's set up somewhere.
And that's what he's got right there. I think he must have been the one, because that one looks just like the one in LJ, he must have been the one who did that one, I bet he was.
Yeah.
So, do we, do we have a vote here today, or we just want, we want to, let me come back with some, a starter price on some of this stuff with a couple of designs, so we know what we can get for, for, and what a good starting price would be? Ask him if we've missed anything here with regards to our bid, you know, and then give him an opportunity, he can, he'll have an opportunity to bid on it as well.
I said, it's, I figure as much information as we can give them to start with.
Okay.
And so, do we want to do two tables, or we just want the 180A up front? Like I said, by, by drawing that three, I think three's too many for that space now that I think about it, but do you want them to bother suggesting springy toys or three or four different kinds?
I would, yeah, I don't know, I mean...
You got the one green tractor at the other, that's the springy toys that I call them.
Yeah. That's Southeast, what is it?
Uh, Southeast Outdoors Solutions.
Okay. Can you post me tomorrow, just like, do you do?
It says he does three consultations, so he comes out and looks at it.
I need to start using this.
And we build off of his, his, that would be his recommendations, maybe, or something.
And so, with us not knowing exactly what fits in place, we just want to set, like I said, we don't want three guys showing up with their most expensive sets.
It would be so cool if we could just open up a book and say, that setup is what we want.
I said, look at those, it's just, it's hard. I mean, the one I liked, out of a lot of them, but it was a fire engine, and I wouldn't think that would be fair.
Yeah.
I don't know, I feel like...
I knew my grandpa loved it.
I also agree that the, the aspects, too, of, it wasn't real high off the ground, there wasn't a lot of fall hazard, there were a lot of activities, but it still was based off of a fire truck, and that would be quite a way fair.
I don't think, I think three tables, you put in this playground, they would be a lot cheaper, isn't it?
All right. Um, so I'll, I'll come back, what I'll do is, I'll try to get a meeting, if I can get it and get it in the afternoon, I'll give you guys a call. I'm going to try to set it up for next week. Um, that way, you can pick his brain as well. Um, all right, um, the next up is going to be Dee, and that's the 2023 budget. Miranda, I'll turn that one over to you.
All right. If you go through here in light, there's, um, just, our revenue's come in significantly increased this year, um, as well as last year. It seems to be the standard increase of, um, annually. But with that being said, you'll see, if you look through here, um, it's an increase of $65,000, but there's a couple of things I want to keep in mind. A is we are increasing, um, for the lease of the land, um, and then, of course, the, uh, cola increases for salaries, um, let's see, the different...
What's the yearly, do you know yearly total on salary increases?
No, I didn't do it overall.
I know the, I know we've got the $12,000.
Basically, I just added that $65,000, it's a $12,000 for the rent on the property.
Yeah.
And, of course, we also included the sanitation changes that we see coming up. So overall, it's 12%. Um, let's see, I'm trying to think of what else I haven't written down, and I don't have it, um, increases to fire services, that was another one, that was kind of a, a big hit. Um, that came in at $116,000 this year, so we went ahead and just made it.
It gone up every year.
It's not, and military hasn't changed, but it's based on the value of the tag or the...
Okay, based on that, yeah.
The military, nothing has changed at all over the past few years.
And that's going to be another, that's another reason, like I was saying earlier, the digest value, digest, the digest increase, change increased, um, for Cherokee County, which is pre, preliminary, and is 12%, but right at 13% this year, um, so it just shows that values have went up, um, as well as, uh, we had a new construction of $387,000 value, too, so you add that to it, um, it's just a steadily increase, like, literally, it's inflation.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, let's see, what else? Uh, we increased the contingency line item to be exactly what it should be, um, which was a big portion of it. Uh, let's see, what else? Do some fees, we increased that, um, I'm pretty sure, was that a Germa thing, Kelsey?
Some of it was them, and then some of it was, if you hadn't asked me, I could have told you. There were several things that had popped up.
That come in way higher this time around?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we also have the one that stuff or assist, like there's a yearly fee on that, there's a maintenance fee for, for what kind of maintenance things that come in usually cluster together.
Oh, also factored in the money, um, for C events.
Okay.
Being able to subside money to continue success, and such and such success.
So you have a line in there for it, instead of just...
It's got its own ideas.
Yeah, I think we talked about, to our movies, we're only going to do like popcorn and drinks and eggs and candy, we're not going to try and do all that, it's too much, so, and, and it's so late in the evening in the summertime that it's just not conducive to...
I think the map, that's pretty much the gist of the...
Do we have an advertising line over here? I know I got called.
Administrator.
Yeah, it's another administrative part, advertising, um...
Is it 2500?
2500.
Okay. And we, we opted not to do this, you know, with the things going?
Yeah, but that's not...
Isn't that part of advertising?
Technically, technically, it could be.
Okay.
The audit fees went up, too, so that's, it's reflected in the budget. Um, attorney fees, number one increase. Um, printing and binding is one of the chamber, I believe, that, $1,000 increase. Is that what you're talking about, the chamber?
No, I'm talking about the, um, Pickens County wanted us to advertise, and then not on a map, or anyone responding to the handout.
That's the chamber, right?
Yeah, it's through the chamber.
Yeah, so that's it.
Yeah, so it's allocated, yeah.
It was only like $1,000.
And... That's, I don't know, I got... Uh, and then, when it comes to the capital budget, it's basically just allocated, the budget steps are the expenditures that are slated to be expended, um, for this fiscal year on the CIP. So you'll see, um, SPOSS 3, remaining balance, which I believe now has changed, um, but it's $39,000. Um, SPOSS 2, the remaining balance of that, that's proposed to be already expended or extended next year, November, $206,372. SPOSS 4, roads and streets, um, we have $173,847 allotted to be spending in roads and streets, and $257,382 in parks and rec. Uh, if it was 2020, we have $477,207. Um, the way that I, also, I'd like to make note that I set this up to where it's a little bit easier to keep track for the council as well as the public, that, um, and labeled it, like, the site improvements per the categories based off of the referendum, the, the SPOSS referendum, which they go to. So, like, Pickens, 2020, um, that is general government, basically, is what our allotments are for, um, so if you look at that, you'll see that I did general government. Um, in the past, for some reason, it's just not been allocated like that, it was just a blank slate. So, um, now it's roads and streets and parks and rec, whenever it comes to SPOSS 4. It's the issue.
Okay, I'll come back.
Okay. Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think I put it on the back of this one. This was the one that I sent, I just updated it.
Okay, I was going to say, I, I...
I was going to say, it was going to drop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like that.
But you, you see what I'm saying, so it keeps a, basically, a running tally of how much money we've spent to, for that year, of each, what they call projects on the referendum. Same thing with SPOSS 5, um, the way it's broken out, transportation, parks and rec, and general government, um, those balances that are remaining to be spent and allocated this year is what's there, so when we complete those projects, it'll come out of that number. So basically, that's just a... It is what it is, that's kind of who the balances for this year are.
Did you, um, did you have something to go for me to, um, give that to you?
I'm going to go back and I'm going to add that, and then I'll...
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, um, with regards to, um, what Miranda's put here for the proposed budget? I know I, I asked you guys to go home and just take a look, and give her a call if you saw anything that you, that stood out to you. In the future, we might give her the things that we, that are like big changes like that, can you highlight it and let us put it out?
Okay, it's funny because you said that on a spreadsheet, uh, on the page over here, it's highlighted.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I think that would really help us see that, see if it's changed, yeah.
I'll just highlight it, yeah, that'd be easy.
And if you have, already have it like that, you would send it out to them and they'll meet up.
Yep.